At 5:34, we'll call a meeting to order. Number two, the approval of the minutes from February 19th to 2025.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from February 19th to 2025.
We have a motion and a second on the floor for the minutes of February 19th, 2025. Ready for question? All in favor, let it known by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, ayes have it, motion carried. Three, subdivision and land development. Thaddeus Stevens.
Yep, this is Thaddeus Stevens, multipurpose dorm.
Good evening. I'm Ben Morton, landscape architect and client manager at RGS Associates, doing the site planning for this project. With me this evening, on the left, is Dr. Chris Metzler, who's the Vice President of Student Services at Thaddeus Stevens, as well as David Fonte, who's the Senior Project Manager at Voith and McTavish Architects, who are the project architects. To start us off, I'm going to have Chris give a little background on the college and the purpose, needs and goals of the project.
Good afternoon, and thank you all for having us here today. We're real excited about this project. To give you a little background, if you don't know, Thaddeus Stevens, two-year technical college, very proud.
Excuse me for the hurricaness. Just state your name for the hurricaness.
Oh, Christopher Metzler. Sorry. So we're two-year technical college. We have under 1,500 students. Roughly half the students live on campus. We serve students from across the state of Pennsylvania, and we've been here since 1905. So we're very proud members of the community. This project specifically will allow us to, part of the project, will have a dining hall. Currently, we have 115-seat dining facility for our 1,400-plus students. We put up a tent and so forth to accommodate seating and so forth. So this facility will have 500 seats in the dining hall. Will also add residence space for our students in a modern dormitory that will allow the students, currently, we have about 100 students that live off-campus, allow to bring those onto campus to be members of the community. So we're real excited about this project. It's long overdue. Looking forward to the opportunity to serve the students that we currently have participating in the education that we provide at the college.
Thank you. To get into some of the details of the site, right now, it got up on the screen just an overall view of the college's main campus, which is surrounded by East King, South Broad, New Dolphin, and Stevens Streets. The main campus is actually comprised of two parcels, one of which, 750 King Street, is owned by the college and is a little over 15 acres, and the second, which is owned by the state's Department of General Services, 121 Stevens Street, is a little over 17 acres. And the property line between them sort of snakes through the center of the campus and through many of the buildings that exist on the campus. The site is zoned to mixed use and within the campus overlay. And what I have highlighted on there is we have a primary project area where the proposed building will go, and then there are two secondary project areas in blue. Both of those are related to water meter pit improvements that are a part of this project. And Ms. Finn, if we could go to the second slide. Zooming in on the primary project site, this is, it's about 1.3 acres of disturbance there. To the west are existing dormitory buildings and, as well as the Schwam building. This area at the upper level is primarily an existing parking lot and also a connection from the student drive to academic drive. There's then a fairly tall and steep slope that leads down to a maintenance yard at the primary maintenance facility on the campus. I'll note that kind of across this primary project area that we're working in, there's about 50 feet of grade change that we're working with. So we are looking to eliminate this parking area, and through that, that change actually will make student drive a much more pedestrian-focused area. We can go to the next slide. So adding the modern dining hall, new consolidated kitchen facilities, and 150 dorm beds is going to take place in a five-story building, highlighted in blue on the screen, with the kitchen receiving and mechanical areas on the lowest level, which has exits and entrances out to the east, and then the main level with the dining halls and entrances to the dorms oriented to the west. Just in terms of some of the overarching zoning pieces for the project, we are removing 51 parking spaces, but that still leaves 418 at the main campus, and just 289 are required based on the zoning ordinance standards. There are six bike parking spaces being added as part of this project that are located right by the main entrance to the dining hall. Back in September of 2023, we obtained variances for building height. The height maximum is 60 feet, and we're just shy of the 64 feet that was approved at that meeting, and much of that is due to the calculations here where we have to look at the average site grade, and given the intense slopes and some of the higher floor-to-floor differences needed for actually a welcoming dining hall led to that change. We also needed to obtain setback variances because there is a property line between the DGS and Thaddeus Stevens parcels running through the building. I'll also note, this is a broader brush item, that the certificate of appropriateness was approved by city council back in September of 2023 as well. If we could go to the next slide. With the topography, I wanted to highlight sort of how this area is functioning, and so it screened back that lower level. So we're looking at the west side of the building. That's really where students will interact with the dorms and the dining hall. So the main entrance is centered on student drive, which, as I noted, is now not going to be a throughway for vehicles, and we really see vehicular traffic being limited to fire access, which was coordinated with the fire marshal, and potentially some special circumstances around events or move-in, but otherwise really being a pedestrian space. In terms of student and staff movements around the area, we're tying into the existing walkway networks, including the accessible route that's located farther down student drive. We did explore making a more direct connection up to academic drive, but there is a bit over 13 feet in vertical difference between that ground level and getting up there, and it just, it didn't seem like a functional way to make that connection. There's also a pull-off area being added to academic drive that is specifically for campus staff service vehicles for catering that they do, so that they can more easily grab things out of the main-level servery and then be able to distribute those to different buildings on the campus when there are events. Moving down below, you know, we've got the kitchen access here, so the loading dock sized for a 40-foot box truck is in that location. The sort of extension of pavement by the maintenance building is part of our fire truck turnaround and access that we coordinated with the fire marshal, but otherwise, we did try to reduce the amount of paved area, which is why there's sort of that central area of green bisecting the loading areas. This is also where we have equipment like generator, transformer, and the HVAC equipment on the south side of the building. And then just to give you a sense of how the building tapers for the format of the dorm rooms on the upper three levels, you know, just highlighting this here. On this slide, just added in utility connections to talk about that a little bit. I noted that both of the water meter pits that serve the property are being reinstalled, and I believe at one of them, the new water meter is going in, and then at both locations, new backflow preventers are going in to meet fairly recent PADEP requirements. But otherwise, we're connecting to the onsite water network that's privately owned. Similarly, sanitary sewer is going to an existing manhole in dormitory drive before connecting with the public system. Stormwater management is all happening beneath that loading dock area, including for those two satellite locations. We're doing a little bit of over-management in this location. And except for one of the water meter pit locations, this is actually in the separate storm sewer area, so we are not connected to the combined sewer system for this project. We do have an PDS permit application in. We've responded to technical comments on that and are hopeful to be getting that permit issued in maybe even the next few days. We do have a list of modifications to go over, but I don't know if you'd prefer to stop here to just talk about or ask questions about the project first?
Yeah, perhaps we'll stop here. Any questions?
Commission?
I was just looking over the earlier slides, and I saw the trees, and I see you've replanted a good portion of trees. Just, could you, is this landscape plant later on in the set?
Not in this set, but in the, I think we've got highlighted on here where we've got trees as well as some screening vegetation. So we've, I think we have eight trees going in as landmark tree replacements, and then we have shrub planting to active screening of the loading area in accordance with the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to check in on that, and feel free to replace the grass with flowers or something like that. That looks good. I just figured it out.
I'll say there certainly are aspects of this where I think, you know, the college as a learning institution has the idea that there are things they may be able to do with students down the road as opposed to, as part of a capital project. So that is some of the thought process there.
Sounds good to me. And you said six bike parking spaces?
Yes.
Okay. It might, it might be worth adding some more spaces. I only say that I occasionally will bike down to Stevens, and I do find myself the lack of bike parking. One of my friends who's a professor let me throw it in the building one day, but if you're able to throw more spots throughout the general area, that'd be great. I'm liking what I see.
Mr. Morton, I'm not clear on how fire access will be served to this building as well as like trash collection?
Sure. I guess maybe if we could go back to the first overall slide, which, I apologize, doesn't have the building on it, but at least since it, I'm going to show you more of the roadway network. I mean, I can, while you're looking for it, I can only start to explain. So there's, there are two access drives on Broad Street that are existing, and one is that academic drive that kind of curves around and then runs to the north side of the building, and then the other is dormitory drive, which is south of the project site. And so fire, fire trucks can get to the west side of the building from actually either one of those roads. They have to travel past the project site, and then they would come on to student drive. And then we have that paved area and retaining wall that's to the west of the building is there specifically to be a turnaround if a fire truck were to need it. So it is really kind of coming in that lower drive and then up onto student drive to get to the west side of the building. And then for the, to get to the east side, they would come in on academic drive and essentially pull down into the loading dock area. There's clearance for the fire truck to get into that easternmost extension of pavement while a truck is parked in the loading dock. And then ultimately, if the truck is moved, the fire truck can use this area to back up. And then they're also able to, they have the appropriate width on academic drive to set up there as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
A question about how many students will be residing in a dormitory portion of the building?
There will be 150 beds.
Really?
Yeah.
You said five stories, right? Five?
Yes, five stories, including that lower level of the kitchen.
I would like to piggyback off of Mr. Dastur's comment a little bit about the bicycles as well. It is a good detail to be looking at. I would consider having a parking area in front of the entrance where the students would come in, but then also have one in the back near the loading dock or wherever the staff would come in who would work there, because I would assume both would want to ride a bike or come into work at times like that. It could be a good possibility to have two locations if there's room in the plan for it.
Yeah. We can look at that, and let me, I think one thing we have to look at is operationally, what I, I'm not certain at the moment is whether those employees would actually, when they arrive, be coming in that way, or whether from a security standpoint, they're coming in the other entrance, but that's a detail we can look at.
Any further questions, Commissioner? So, Mr. Morton, you said you wanted to go through?
Yes, we do have a list of waivers and modifications for the project. There's one, just on an administrative note, we requested administrative waiver of preliminary plan filing, so this is a preliminary final plan. And then we have seven that relate to the fact that the 750 King Street site, we do not have the deed for that property. This is apparently something that goes back, even looking at some land development plans from the late 90s. The deed was not present then, and there were waivers of the then-current sections of the ordinance related to showing various details that are dependent on having a deed. There's also one related to a waiver of the financial security. Just as a matter of practice, the state, which is funding this project, does not post financial securities, and I know this is a waiver that's been approved on other DGS-funded projects in the city in the past. And then we have several waivers related to frontage improvements that, as a sort of general rule, are related to the project being at or removed from the frontage and being such a small portion of the property compared to the frontage that this site has, which is, I believe, around 4,100 feet. Kind of to go into those specifically, two related items are for an ADA ramp and crosswalk at the intersection of Stevens Avenue and New Dolphin Street at the far southwest corner of the site. That's a location where actually on the college's campus, there is no sidewalk on the campus, and so constructing that crossing and curb ramp at this time didn't really make sense. We are also looking, though, at waivers of street lighting, concrete sidewalk installation and replacement, and modification related to the street tree installation. With all of those things, you know, what we're looking at here is there's, one, just a very significant frontage relative to the size of this project and the funding intent that the state had with it when the project began. There are several areas where there are just various types of complications that we are hopeful can be worked out and sort of an alternative framework that I'll speak to in a moment, but, you know, on anything done to East King Street, such as sidewalks, trees, streetlights, would require the involvement of PennDOT to review those, and this project otherwise on its own does not need any sort of PennDOT permits. On South Broad Street, we're aware that the city's looking at reconfiguring that right-of-way and that street, and so installation of sidewalk and trees that then may need to be altered as curb lines change did not really make sense. Also, along that frontage, there are, there's water, stormwater and sewer that are all located within the right-of-way, but actually, rather than being under the cartway, they're underneath both where trees and the sidewalk are located. And so there's discussion needed in the future as to when does it make sense to relocate those utilities and how does future tree planting work with those things? So we've had several meetings with the city on this, and the city staff and the CS Davidson are recommending approval of all of these items, but I'll note specifically with the street tree quantity, we are working on a memorandum of understanding where the college will be posting financial security for the trees that are not being planted now, and then as they are set to engage in a master planning process, it's really a first of its kind for an institution like them, there will be engagement with the city as well as planning on how those things can be accomplished as other projects are developed, and then ultimately a return of that security as those trees are planted. So that was as short as I could summarize it, but I'm happy to provide more details.
Could you go into more detail about the ADA waivers you had said again?
Yes. So specifically, it was noted that at Stevens Avenue and New Dolphin Street, there's, per the ordinance, there would be a need for new crosswalk and also curb ramps, and we are proposing not to install those at that corner because we don't actually even have sidewalk on that corner for you to then utilize if you were to make that crossing.
Could we, could we pull up a visual so I can better understand? Because while we're pulling it up, the reason why that one specifically kind of hit me a little funny, I have recently taken it upon myself, I know that Thaddeus Stevens reenactor apparently, did not expect that to be on my resume. Something I can learn, though, is that he was physically disabled himself. He obviously lived in an era where ADA act was not to his benefit. I'm not opposed to the idea of like postponing the need for those to be installed, but I do think ADA things, especially in regards to the Lexus Stevens, shouldn't be totally waived.
Sure. Well, I think what the, the notion is that if the sidewalk installation is being waived, it would make sense to, until certainly the next time there's a project on the campus, you will be having this discussion about sidewalks again, and as part of the master planning process, how these sidewalks along these frontages should be implemented is going to be a point of conversation between the college and the city. And so until there's a sidewalk installed on Stevens and New Dolphin, it doesn't really make sense to add the curb ramp at that location, was the thinking.
Right. Yeah, and like I wouldn't want you to put a curb ramp in nowhere, like a notable traffic signal somewhere in the east of the county that has four curb ramps and no sidewalk.
Yeah, they don't go anywhere. Yeah.
But like you're saying to us that this, the campus has a vision for figuring out, I guess, walkways in general. If there's a way we can postpone this requirement so it becomes part of another plan at a later date, that would be a preference. I don't know if we're able to do that. You would have more expertise than me on that.
I made a question first. Can the city grant deferrals of sidewalk requirements? I don't know, Lauren, if you have any insights on that, or is it really just either keep the requirement or waive it?
Betsy?
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. Yeah, definitely in the past. I don't know about here specifically, but yes, a deferral sidewalk, sometimes within like six months of, you know, of notice that they have to install.
I guess six months of my work for this, for this purpose.
Well, not like, not six months before the project is, like, just after the city would notify them that, like, we want you to install.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so it could be a three or four, like if there's no limit on the deferral of sidewalk.
So the deferral could be like for ten years, let's say, like while they navigate X, Y, Z other projects and planning procedures, and then a decade from now, the city's like, hey, remember that sidewalk? We'd like it installed in six months. Like it could work like that.
Typically that's how.
Like, I really am at a hold of that.
I mean, one, just, one challenge with that is that we end up then in another sort of agreement, land and commitments that have already been a challenge for the college to make in terms of the trees, and that's really been the priority focus that staff has given us. The thing that I would suggest is that the next time there is anything that qualifies as a land development on either of these properties, the requirement for the sidewalk installation is there anew. And so if we, if, like, it's still a requirement for any future project, so the next time there's any sort of land development on this property, then you would be having the same conversation. And so rather than having a deferral and figuring out what is the appropriate timeline and how does that work with then needing to get various types of permitting, or how does it work with their future master plan and then trying to amend an agreement, I think, you know, from our perspective, it's just simpler that they're going to be working on this master plan, and when they're coming to this next meeting with a land development plan, they will have been engaging with the city as to what does the future of installation of right-of-way improvements look like? And so while it might be possible that this corner still wouldn't be getting it, you'd actually have an understanding of what the phases of these improvements would be, and those would kind of be worked out more incrementally as part of that process rather than as a standalone agreement with this prior to the master planning taking place.
Yeah, and I would add that as part of the MOU, there is, and we're still like finalizing that, but there is a requirement that all, like, future streetscape planning is, like, that we're working together, at least, on that. So I would be fine with just making it, you know, known that, because I would, because it's going to be something that's on the master plan, and that's what kind of we're going to go off of. So we can either add something to the MOU that's a little bit more specific to that related to sidewalks and the master plan for future development as opposed to putting a deferral on it.
Okay.
I would say very rarely are deferrals ever actually, like, are people so like satisfied that they need to put a sidewalk in.
Sure. No, I mean, that's reasonable. I mean, and I don't want to hold up your work on this project, because I actually really appreciate how Steve was just thinking about, like, hey, we're going to build these units so we can start renovating other units. It's one of my things where I'm like, colleges really need to house their students, because otherwise it becomes chaos in the rest of the housing market, so thank you, like genuinely thank you. Okay, I think I've said my piece.
Further comment for the commission? Any public comment? Hearing none?
Ms. Finn, just confirming that the city is in support of the seven modifications?
We are. This would be a conditional approval, and we do have This would be a conditional approval and we do have five conditions. And I'll just go ahead and read them. The conditions of approval are that they must satisfy the outstanding plan comments that were noted on the most recent letter of review dated March 17th, 2025. That was provided to RGS. It was Army Thaddeus Stevens College of Technology, holding purpose dormitory building land development plan. They must submit an opinion of probable construction cost, which is acceptable to the city staff. There is an execution of memorandum of understanding, that is, as it relates to street trees that is found acceptable to the city solicitor, city staff and Thaddeus Stevens. They must submit a financial guarantee in accordance with the amount established by the approved memo of understanding as it relates to street trees and enter into a final plan developers agreement with the city that is satisfactory to the city staff and the city solicitor.
Great.
Ms. Stevens, could I ask one question about the conditions? The second one was about an opinion of probable cost. Is that truly needed if the financial guarantee generally is being waived?
There would still need to be an opinion of probable cost.
Okay. I thought I heard that is one of the conditions.
Yes. I think there would still need to be.
Oh, there would still need to be an opinion of probable cost, even though we're not posting the security?
That is what is listed.
Okay.
We can further discuss that.
Okay. Okay, just wanted to clarify.
I can double check.
It's not a.
They did with the Learning Center.
Okay. Yeah, it's not a major hangup. I just want to make sure I was understanding.
Yeah, I can double check what was done with the Learning Center.
Do our motions affect that discussion in any way?
No.
Do we need to put a condition on that?
You can do a motion to approve with the conditions provided by the city.
Sure.
And I think that that will cover it.
Okay. I have a motion.
And so again, the motion would be for conditional approval.
Condition.
I'll make a motion to conditionally approve the plan, the Thaddeus Stevens Dormitory Plan, considering the five conditions that Ms. Stevens reviewed tonight and that you, the two of you will work together, the two organizations will work together to come up with a viable solution for the opinion of probable cost.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion on the floor to second to approve the Thaddeus Stevens multi-purpose dormitory plan by modifications, conditions rented by the city. Ready for the questions? All in favor, let it known by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Hearing none? Ayes, ayes have, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Number four, staff report to planning commission.
So I had previously sent back for the March fifth meeting, a report that I had put together regarding the 2024 year in review. And it summarized all of the findings of the planning commission. And so hopefully you all read that and were very proud of yourselves for all of your accomplishments during 2024. So I thank you for that work and I'm happy to take any questions now or if you have questions later, you can always feel free to shoot me an email and I'm happy to answer any questions about that report. If not, I'll move on and give a brief update on the East End project. And so we are moving forward with the small area plan. We are getting ready to come into a big public engagement boost in April and May, primarily. The project team is continuing to meet, so we're coming up to another meeting, I believe, next week. So we'll have another project team meeting. And then during that project team meeting, we're actually going to be reviewing the case studies that the consultants used to look at, to compare what it was like to have to redevelop a prison property, property. And so that's kind of the next task for the project team to review the case studies that have been found by our consultant. And then when we move into public engagement, we're going to have two days of focus groups and pop-ups. And I believe it's April 14th and 15th. And we're going to have a day Monday, Tuesday. That Monday, we're going to have, we're going to host a focus group of businesses that are in the neighborhood in the morning, obviously because it's breakfast. And then in the afternoon, we're going to have a pop-up at Reservoir Park and we're going to catch people going to and from the Cassidy campus as well as anybody else that's out. We'll be out there from like two to five.
And what, what?
Reservoir Park.
Reservoir, okay.
And then on Tuesday, we're going to flip our day. So we're going to start off at Reservoir Park in the morning from seven to nine AM and catch people going to school and work. And then in the afternoon, we're going to meet with, with a group of community organizations, representatives from community organizations in the area. So we'll have those two days. We're also intermittently doing some other interviews for folks that don't really fit well into either of those categories, but we think are important to have a voice in the plan. And so we'll be doing that. And then in May, which is a very busy month for the city, we're going to kind of show up in lots of different places. So we'll be at Open Streets, we'll be at the, the Bike Fling, the Common Wheel Bike Fling, we'll be at the African American Festival, which is also in Reservoir Park. Just doing activities and handing out our QR code for our survey. Our survey is doing really well, even with the small amount of engagement that we've had so far. We've got well over 200 responses, I think around 270, which is really great if you've ever, if you've ever done a public engagement survey, you know that that's a decent number considering we haven't really been out and about. I mean, it's really just through like social media promotion and things like that. So the survey is doing well. And so I think we're just moving forward.
I got a question. Has the county made it clear at all what they intend to do for the property? So it's speculation at this point. Okay.
Further question?
I assume during some of those events that you'll be in touch with our fellow team members, the assistants can help.
Yes.
If possible, maybe we can get some dates out so that we can start saving some of them if you know anything in advance.
For the, for the May ones?
Yeah.
And so for the May, it will be, I think, May 10th.
10th.
Yeah. And then I think that the Common Wheel event is May 18th. And then the African American Festival is May 31st.
All right.
May 31st?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
The whole weekend?
Yep.
The last weekend in May? Okay. Number five, other business. The accessory dwelling unit, ADUs.
And so again, this is a leftover item from our not meeting on March 5th. So I had sent links for these three particular articles that addressed all topics that had come up, excuse me, when we were talking about ADUs the first time. So the first one was Lexington. And then I think that some of the points to pull out from the Lexington article, one of the things that they talk about is kind of selling the, the benefits of ADUs to homeowners in, in order to encourage them to pursue something like this. However, Lexington's ADU ordinances are very strict. If you read that, if you read through it, for example, they're limited to like 800 square feet. They have pretty, pretty tight requirements around their size where they can go, they can only go in low density. So they're not, they're not actually permitted by right in high density. So that's just how they went about their ordinance, but it is interesting. And at the very end of this article, there is a homeowner's guide. And I think that that was like the most interesting piece. So there's this homeowner's guide, which is something that we had discussed briefly. Where, and this is a pretty big publication, but they, this is something that we had talked about the possibility of creating. Again, it's AARP and we had talked about how much work they do in this effort. So I think this is just a nice reference point to see what can be done. I mean, particularly like, you know, just here, we have the, the types of the ADUs and the pictures, kind of what it promotes. I just thought it was a really good guide and it was something that we had discussed doing. So I thought it would be a worthwhile read for, for those who are interested. And then the Madison County, this one I thought was particularly interesting because it's similar to what our ordinance is now in terms of it, it speaks to providing secondary units on residential lots, which is essentially what our ordinance does. So it's comparable in that effect. The other thing that this article talks about is the fact that like ADUs are not inexpensive. And so, you know, when we're talking, having the discussion about affordable housing and how ADUs might help affordable housing, some of it is in the permitting. You know, so in so a lot of the articles that talk about ADUs, one of the main things they talk about is how to streamline the permitting process because that is, it goes costs money and time, the permitting process. And so that, you know, that is one thing. Of course, as a solution, they also address, you know, these prefab designs. And so again, it comes back to this idea of having something that you know will pass, that you know will get approval, so it can be made a lot quicker and it can be, and you know it's going to be approved. So you don't have to, again, it just streamlines the process. And so, you know, in this instance, they only have a few to choose from. And so the other example, I think they had a bunch more, but you can kind of choose which way to go. So again, just another, another way to reference what's being done somewhere else. And then this last one, is this really more about how to do research around ADUs? And so, you know, they talk about legislation and they also talk a lot about, you know, using GPS to kind of map the locations, so, I mean, GPS GIS to map the locations. And so, you know, again, this is just, this is more of a how do we do this? And so I thought that this would prompt some discussion regarding the role of the planning commission going forward in terms of what you might want to tackle. You clearly have an interest in ADUs and I think that it is a good implementation of our strategic plan, of our comprehensive plan, sorry, of our comprehensive plan. And so I think that this kind of points out two different things. It's developing a guide, which could be something that the planning commission could certainly pursue, and figuring out how to study them. So to that end, I will say that we have, we've gotten ourselves an intern from Franklin and Marshall for the summer. And that intern is going to spend a good amount of time doing some GIS work, looking at ADUs and sometimes walking around, looking at ADUs as well. I would also say that I had a great conversation with the Small Cities Lab, thank you very much, Porter, in Bethlehem. They were lovely and we talked a lot about the alley houses and their program. And they also have students that, you know, every semester they have a group of students that are looking for projects. And so I think that they actually might come visit Lancaster this summer. And they're going to be having some kind of symposium in September that I'll probably attend as well. So that was a great connection and they do a lot of really good work. And so I would encourage you to look at their website as well for the alley houses. So there's a lot to consider there. I think that that pretty much covers what I was planning to say with the ADUs, but I'm happy to hear from you all and for you all to discuss kind of amongst yourselves what, what you think you want to pursue as the planning commission toward, toward this end.
So let me just throw this out there because you're talking about Bethlehem and the students and I never, I don't know why this didn't occur to me before, but Thaddeus Stevens Architecture Department does the same project, at least under my colleague Bella Everett. That's not Bella, I can't remember her last name.
I know, you're talking about that.
Yeah, Bella is her last name. But anyway, Jack, so they do a new Bella every year and the students design it, but I wonder if she would be interested in teaching something where they could actually touch the community and.
Yeah, we've, I think it's a great idea. Even we have actually talked about a way to bring that to Stevens in, particularly when it comes to, you know, having some model units and what those units might look like.
I mean, that would save a lot of costs.
Yeah.
Especially if there's specific properties you want to target. Now, I know that, that gets a little hairy when you have private landowners, but like, you know, that'd be kind of cool.
Yep. Yes, absolutely.
And I think this whole district of Lancaster also has a similar thing with their drafting program, don't they? Where you can bring in some talent from there as well.
I like the idea of having these plans sets already made. I mean, I caught a quote at the bottom of that one article where it said like, we've been able to approve these in a day. It's as simple as grabbing a plan set and saying, yeah, go for it. But I like the idea of having those sets because, you know, I, I think the real issue we're facing is that these are already going to be planned for a subdivision neighborhood. Like no developer is going to come and be like, oh yeah, I can build a bunch of these, get them all done. And it's unrealistic to also like get a bid together for a bunch of these random sites. So anything we can do, I feel like the zoning is kind of there for building ADUs already. It's the turnkey aspect and getting individuals to feel like they're supported in this process, including the financing. So I, I feel like that's the direction we should head in, is how can we facilitate the turnkey and easiness, for lack of better words, of this process?
I like that idea. And I think the AARP book, and I looked at Mr. Whalen down there, but that, I feel like we should just adopt that. It's like maybe the city manual of like, not manual, but it just, it's a white, yeah, it's a good reference point. I mean, I, you know, it doesn't need to say city line is drawn and you can certainly use it as a resource for people who have questions about it, wanting to use it, wanting, wanting to consider something. They've obviously put a lot of time and effort into that document.
I'll just also add, I did catch very briefly one of the articles you had up, I think it might have been the second one, and there was a sentence in there that said, you know, this, this complies with all state codes in the state of California. And I feel like we can have just as much impact on at least providing assistance and information to property owners who are interested in building ADUs, you know, presenting, you know, kind of ready-to-go plans that are also compliant with, you know, state building codes and also, you know, providing help with making sure your ADUs comply with things like stormwater. As we saw, I think we, the person.
I'll just also add, I did tag very briefly one of the articles, you had a, I think it might have been the second one, and there was a sentence in there that said, you know, this, this complies with all state codes in the state of California. And I feel like we can have just as much impact on at least providing assistance and information to property owners who are interested in building ADUs. You know, presenting, you know, kind of ready-to-go plans are also compliant with, you know, state building codes, and also, you know, providing help with making sure your ADUs comply with things like stormwater. Because we saw, I think the person who was here yesterday last time, shared that that was a big obstacle. So, you know, I think I agree with Tony, I think the zoning obstacles are, are either not really there, or they're fairly minimal, and are, it's pretty straight, it's obviously still hard work, but it's pretty straightforward to change those. It's, I think, where the, where the rubber really meets the road is just some of those finer details, like complying with building codes, stormwater. And so I think, thinking about how can we provide, you know, plug-play plans that can take a lot of that guesswork out. And again, recognizing every property is different, in some parts. I mean, I think, you know, kind of where I live on Plum Street, I think that a lot of those lots are pretty standard. Like, they're all nice rectangles that, so I think there is a potential in some parts of the city where pre-approved plans can really, I think, be a powerful tool to, to make at least the, if not the structural cost, at least the, you know, the planning approval process much, much easier. So I think that's something we should look at as well.
And I'll add to that. I mean, I think the city, if I heard this correctly, is looking at ways that to do this developers clearing house sort of thing, which is like a way to strategically help developers understand the land development process in the city of Lancaster before they even get there. And I don't want to talk myself out of a job here, but at the same time, I can't tell you how many calls I get weekly with, I want to build something in my backyard, I want to build a new garage, I want to build something, can I do this?
Okay.
And, yeah, sure, yeah, yeah, sure. And I mean, people don't even know what a setback is, they certainly don't know what the environmental impacts are. It'd be nice to have just a little, again, I don't talk myself out of a job, but like a little checklist for people to like look into, you know, so that way they're not, so if you're an inexperienced developer, or if just somebody wants to do something good, they're not coming at it completely blind and then being seventeen thousand dollars in permitting fees before they, they do, you know.
I think that's a great point, and I think that one of the interesting things about that is that we do have checklists. They're not that easy to find regarding land development, but it also, they're in a place where you would pretty much be set that you were going to be doing a land development and getting ready to submit for a land development, as opposed to, hey, I might build something, like, what would that look like? And so those are very different places to be in planning. So I like the idea of creating something, and again, I think that that is something that could be a separate handout, you know, that's like a one pager that we could have available to, we could send it as a PDF to developers, we could have it, like, if somebody calls you, you can say, hey, I have this resource, like, let me just shoot this over to you.
First, first of all, honestly, I think the city zoning code, like the table of permitted uses and the density and the, the other tables in there are really easy to understand, and are associated with a lot of other zoning ordinances, because they're actually in tables. So I think that there's a level of the layman being able to read those, if we can point them in the right direction.
Yeah.
I'm only smiling because Jimmy was not there.
Really? I love it, because I can go through and say, you know, that's what's permitted.
Tell Jimmy we requested that. On that note though, actually, I want to take a step back from actually the land development process and just kind of consider how we can help educate the public on ADUs and maybe how can a person ADU on their property? Because I'm going to guess, and I have no statistics to quote this on, but I'm going to guess that a number of people in our general community have no idea what an ADU is, or have no idea or concept of what an accessory dwelling unit is, and what the benefit to them and/or the community is. So before we get into like land development process on how do I even do this, I think we need to really consider how we can educate people to bring awareness to the accessory dwelling units, and then, you know, kind of take it from, from that step on. And, and I also think that maybe even before we get into that, not that we need to undergo this humongous study, but I think we really need to give consideration as to like how that fits into the existing network of the communities that we're currently living in. Because there are properties, I'm sure within this city, that make complete sense for an accessory dwelling unit to be located on their property, and I'm sure that there are properties in this neighborhood that make no sense for it. And there are going to be people that are going to want to put it on the no-sense neighborhood. So that's where I think the education needs to start from.
I'll take that one step further. So you have an opportunity with the East End Area Plan, not that you're really going to be able to, I'm sure, come up with like literature before then, but the Stadium Area Plan is getting kicked off by the city lines too. I don't know, within some of those engagement events, I haven't looked at that proposal, so I don't know how the, the firm is going about that, but if there's ways to, to dovetail into that and, and pass out literature at those events, you might be able to capture a good bit of, of the community at that. But it would have to be vetted, obviously, very well vetted. I think Nicole, Nicole's point is, is a good one, that not every property in every neighborhood is the right spot for it. How do you make those determinations? Leave that up to you guys.
Yeah, I do think that, I like where you're going with that. I do think that this is something that will have to be thought out and produced and budgeted for, like, if you're printing out something. So I think that like, yes, I love your enthusiasm for getting it out there in like the next two months, but also the kind of realistic timeline in me is like, hmm, probably not going to happen.
I, I just, yeah.
But think about all of the fall activities, autumn festivals.
Well, that would be fine too, you know, or even celebrate Lancaster when that comes around, and maybe you could have a stand there. There's, there's, there's a lot of power of engaging with people personally. I know you know that as a planner, I know everybody here does too. Those vertical surveys, I mean, they work, they just kind of suck.
I think it would also be helpful to understand the zoning update and the timeline for the accessory dwelling units, because we would need to update some of the zoning laws in order to allow these buildings to occur in much easier than what the gentleman explained last week or the last meeting that we had. And where was I going with that? Anyway, I, I just think it's really important that we have an understanding of.
The order.
What needs to change and, and what some, I think, essentially what I think we need is a big overview picture of like all of the things that are going to be affected by undertaking this, and then kind of set the strategic direction on, you know, what makes sense to tackle first. I, I, I love all the ideas that are being had, I think we just need to kind of compile maybe a big list of something that needs to be put together, and then kind of create an approach on how to tackle it.
Well, I will leave that to one of you.
Yeah.
Well, actually, Lauren and I are meeting next week to kind of start that process, to get an action plan kind of together, and, you know, having these ideas you guys talked about today, which are helpful in trying to get that started.
Um, I, I, I don't want to forget this. To the point about like, some places may not be appropriate for this use. I mean, I, I can understand some level of that. I mean, I'm a form, I'd like to see some more form-based as opposed to use-based zoning in the city. But I really think the zoning is where and how we determine what areas this is appropriate in. Because I think if there's another measure outside of that, we're making it less turnkey. Like, that's, I think making it clear where these are permitted in the zoning ordinance is really the end of it, frankly. And I, I want to speak on that point from a resident in an R2 zone. I've lived at my property basically my whole life, like from zero to now, with some, a couple moves down the street in there. I've seen my neighborhood just frankly be set my entire life, and I feel it's in part because we're an R2 zone, can't really do a lot, no businesses can open. I think one of the few by right business uses in my area is like a daycare facility. So for the sake of our neighborhoods, yeah, we do need to be mindful of what is going in there, but I also think we should be mindful of the way our zoning code has stagnated the progress of our neighborhoods and ability to have affordable housing.
To me, Tony, I think it comes down, at least what I was agreeing to was like dimensional requirements, like some lots are not going to actually fit that. So that's all with the zoning code, don't get me wrong, I'm just, just to clarify.
And I'd also add that it also could just mean that, because I probably think all the lots have a head, it's just like, like, you know, backyard, garage, you know, over garage type area, that might just mean that might, the only kind of ADU available to you is, is kind of an internal subdivision in your house, as opposed to separate structure. And I'd also just like to add, a hundred percent agree with what Nicole's been saying about the need to really organize ourselves internally, get our ducks in a row before we start to go out to the, to the outside world and try to get some ADUs, you know, potentially built. I think a big part of that is also, you know, partnership as well, because we've talked about a lot of potential partners, both today and last, we'd had this discussion, you know, Thaddeus Stevens students, the folks in Bethlehem. I think also we did talk about like an affordable housing angle, specific to, you know, older homeowners who are now living on a fixed income, a larger house, that either they can't, don't have the physical capability to maintain, or cannot financially afford, where they could potentially move into an ADU and then either rent out their home to another family or allow a younger generation of their family to move in as well. So that also opens up, I think that's a fantastic angle that we should really look into a lot more, and that also opens up, you know, talking with Lancaster Housing and Redevelopment Authority, all the amazing organizations that are working on housing as well. So I think there's a strong need for, and also think the point is in fact, you know, we're very fortunate to have some amazing staff in our planning department, but we are human beings and they can't do everything on top of all their regular day-to-day duties. So I think there's a strong need for some, you know, if this is a project that we really want to pursue, for either some kind of subcommittee in this body, or it's a, it's a job that's best for one of our advisory boards elsewhere in the city. I, I think there is definitely a need for some kind of small working group to, I think, take this, kind of take this head on and start to make a lot of these connections and think about, you know, there's all these different groups, all these different people who are doing amazing work, how can we all get their energies to bring, bring them to bear on this issue?
Porter, I was.
Sounds good. Go ahead.
Porter, I was actually thinking we should propose that, maybe having a subcommittee of, I think it would have to be three, right? We have to staple over a forum to do it, and have a subcommittee of three interested volunteers. We could obviously report back to the commission on, you know, like a month or two from now with a set goal and a set date. I think that, we could propose that today, couldn't we? We could propose that.
Regarding the members of that committee, you can have three commissioners with voting power, are we allowed to have alternates serve on that as well? I mean, I would have to, I would have to look, I don't, I don't see why not. I mean, again, they're not, they're not voting members, and so they're essentially, in that circumstance, they're really more members of the public. They're, because they're not serving in a, the capacity of a planning commissioner. And so, I mean, even, you know, if you think about like at meetings, as long as we have a forum, technically, like, they don't even have to be here. So, I mean, they're here of their own accord, and they want to be, but, so I think that in a subcommittee capacity, they're not really serving as commissioners. And so if it's a subcommittee of the commission.
Yeah, I think we, I would want to get that a little.
Yeah, if, if it's a subcommittee of the commission.
If you're a voting member, right, it's needed. So I'm not sure how that.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Obviously, their input would be probably back, you know, so, yeah. Any further discussion?
I did have one more question.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any zones currently or in the future zoning map that would not allow us to do this? I'm not saying by right, but in general, there's no limitations, are there?
Not at this point.
Not at this point.
Right, so I would say, yeah, like that hasn't been developed.
Right.
I mean, currently, you can have a second principal structure on any, like in any zoning district right now. So in theory, you, there's no zoning restriction on that end. You're looking at the set axle lock coverage, the utilities, the access to public road, I think are the biggest ones, and then the stormwater requirement.
Yeah.
And would we have to eliminate the brothel thing completely? The three people in the same, the brothel ordinance, you know, whether that's by what was formed, having people who are not related living in the same property.
The definition of the family. The definition of the family. Yeah.
You can strike out for the minutes, thank you.
Well, I think that was a really good conversation, so I thank you all for that.
Okay. Any further public comment?
Nope.
Hearing none? Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You guys got it on your game, someone second that.
I really want to say.
Second, here, a motion and a second. And for the question, all in favor, let it known by saying aye.
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 Who was the second?
Me.
See?
Me. That's your, at six thirty-nine, six, six thirty-nine. Thank you for your.